Okay, at 6:00 PM we'll call our meeting in order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Maureen, can we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mrs. Rail?
Here.
Mrs. Head?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bembo?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Crane?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with a special recognition of district employees. Looks like we have a few with us tonight.
Retirees.
Retirees. I'd like to start with Kristin.
My mother's smiling.
Chris.
Come on up, Maureen.
Okay, that's for you.
Kristin J. Jostin, retirees from her position at Lincoln High School after seventeen years with the Wisconsin Rapid School District. Kristin started in the district as principal's secretary at East Junior High before assuming the position as associate principal's secretary receptionist at Lincoln High School. In her position at the high school, Kristin became very skilled at pronouncing student names if you could hear her paging students every day, and she always greeted visitors to the high school with a warm smile. Kristin is active in various church committees and as a vacation Bible school teacher and was involved in PTL while her children were in school. She looks forward to enjoying the outdoors, traveling, and most of all, enjoying her family and grandchildren during retirement. Kristin, your voice will be missed in the hallways of Lincoln High School. We wish you all the best in your retirement and thank you for your many years of service to the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District. The state superintendent of the State of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, it's a recognition of commitment and service presented to Kristin J. Jostin in recognition of seventeen years of commitment and service to the educational well-being of our young people. These contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say? Yeah, before.
Just thank you very much. I've enjoyed all my years.
Thank you.
A lot of your contribution, so.
Well, thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
DeBonne?
DeBonne has been with the Wisconsin Rapids School District for the past twenty-four years. She's retiring from her library aide position at Lincoln High School. DeBonne could always be found in the IMC at the high school assisting students and staff with a smile and has been a great source to go to in order to find out what the latest and greatest book is that you should read. Busy with her scrapbooking, genealogy, and Elks ladies, DeBonne hopes to spend more time with her grandchildren as well as spend more time traveling with her husband. DeBonne is also actively involved with the Corvets of the North Car Club, so watch for her in the car. Congratulations, DeBonne, and best wishes on your retirement.
Tony Evers, the state superintendent, this is presented to Deborah DeBonne in recognition of twenty-four years of commitment and service to the educational well-being of our young people. These contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ray Ann Boston?
Ray Ann Boston is retiring after twenty-five years of service at East Junior High School. She started at East as the registrar and has spent the last two years as a library aide at East. Ray Ann has stated that it has been a pleasure to work with everyone at WRPS. While at East, Ray Ann played a very important role in helping to organize the East Junior High Honors Breakfast for the past twenty-five years and has been recognized as support staff person of the year. A mom of four children, she has worked over the years with Legion baseball, highway cleanup projects, and various service programs. Ray Ann's future plans include obtaining a paralegal license as well as a real estate license, but most importantly, being a grandpa. We wish her the best in her retirement and future endeavors. Congratulations, Ray Ann, and thank you for everything you have done for the students and staff in the WRPS.
Thank you.
Tony Evers, presented to Ray Ann B. Boston in recognition of twenty-three point five years of commitment and service to the educational well-being of our young people. These contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ray Ann Boston?
Ray Ann Boston is retiring after twenty-five years of service at East Junior High School. She started at East as the registrar and has spent the last two years as a library aide at East. Ray Ann has stated that it has been a pleasure to work with everyone at WRPS. While at East, Ray Ann played a very important role in helping to organize the East Junior High Honors Breakfast for the past twenty-five years and has been recognized as support staff person of the year. A mom of four children, she has worked over the years with Legion baseball, highway cleanup projects, and various service programs. Ray Ann's future plans include obtaining a paralegal license as well as a real estate license, but most importantly, being a grandpa. We wish her the best in her retirement and future endeavors. Congratulations, Ray Ann, and thank you for everything you have done for the students and staff in the WRPS.
Thank you.
Tony Evers, presented to Ray Ann B. Boston in recognition of twenty-three point five years of commitment and service to the educational well-being of our young people. These contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been great. Wonderful. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you. Cindy Vorski?
Cindy Vorski has retired from the Wisconsin Rapids School District after twenty-five years of service as a German teacher and an educator effectiveness coach and professional development coordinator. Cindy has expressed gratitude for all the support she's received from the administrative teams over the years and her efforts and involvement on many special projects. Cindy has been the CII chairperson, LHS department chairperson, and QVC member. Some of her projects included PI-34, new teacher mentor, PVP review team, and educator effectiveness trainings. Cindy looks forward to spending quality time caring for her father and traveling with her husband. We wish you all the best in your retirement, Cindy, and thank you for your many years of service and contributions made to the students of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District. Congratulations.
Tony Evers, presented to Cynthia J. Vorski in recognition of twenty-five point five years of commitment and service to the educational well-being of our young people. These contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Mary Peterson?
She's not there.
Mary's not here?
Okay.
How many years?
Mary, I have fifteen years.
Thank you.
Howard Hens. Are you sure this is allowed?
I handle different.
Congratulations. Howard Hens is retiring from the Wisconsin Rapids School District after twenty-six years of service. Howard was initially hired as a heating and air conditioning technician for the district in nineteen eighty-four after completing his HVAC certification at Grand Park Technical Institute in Fond du Lac. In nineteen eighty-eight, he decided to go back to school to become a teacher. In nineteen ninety-three, Howard graduated from UW Stevens Point with a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and Environmental Science. After graduation, he came back to the district to teach sixth grade at Washington Elementary School, followed by teaching sixth grade math at WAC Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School. While at Washington, Howard was known for using an environmental focus to teach the content areas. His classroom included many hands-on activities and had many classroom pets such as chinchilla and dagus.
Dagus.
Okay. Howard is looking forward to retirement in order to spend more time in the woods, to plant and harvest trees, and build a log cabin. Awesome. Congratulations, Howard. We wish you all the best in your retirement and thank you for your many years of service to the students of the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District. And from Tony Evers, presented to Howard Hens in recognition of twenty-six years of commitment and service to the educational well-being of our young people. These contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation. Thank you. Congratulations to all. Happy for you, but sad for our district. We're losing much experience and dedication that's awful hard to replicate, so enjoy your retirement years.
Just to add, John, I just added it up. Hundred and thirty-two years of teaching experience. We're losing today.
Wow.
Six retirees. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we can move on to the minutes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion at the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of May eleventh and the special Board of Education meeting, there were three closed session, of May thirteenth, be approved as printed.
Okay, motion of second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of May eleventh and the three special Board of Education closed meeting minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Maureen, do we have any comments tonight?
No.
Okay, we can move on to our committee reports. John, start with business.
Yes, thank you, John. We met, had a field trip on our first meeting today, or on June first. We met at four-thirty at the Building Trade Home, open house for us. Ron and DeBonne who just left, but they were the ones that had graciously put up the funds so that our kids could build this house. It's always amazing to go through this house and listen to Terry Boras tells about all of the experiences, and there's usually only about twelve to thirteen kids in these classes. I believe it was thirteen this year? I think so. I think he said thirteen. And he always talks about how, you know, some of these kids, specific kids, that he isn't sure what they would have done if they didn't have this class because they really didn't want to go on to a further education other than maybe a tech school, but they like to work with their hands and they like to do things as far as building trades, and this is kind of a step towards that type of atmosphere. But it always amazes us when we tour these houses, the work that they do, the workmanship, the pride that they take, and particularly the homeowners this year who were actually reselling the home, so they were kind of sad to see the house go too because they're losing their little baby that they kind of incubated and built with the kids. So it was a very impressive display of work that our kids have done in the school district. And I'd also like to thank Terry Boras for the time that he puts in because he goes well above and beyond the time that he gets paid for in doing these projects, and there are other tech ed teachers involved that help them out along that when they do need help. So, you know, thank all the teachers that get involved with this to make this a very productive and a win-win community project for both our students, the school district, and the community and members that build these houses, or buy these houses. Is there any other, people like to make any comments on the houses?
No, I like John's comments. It's always amazing to me to walk into a home that was a hole in the ground nine months before that bunch of young men and sometimes young ladies build, and it's something they should have an awful lot of pride in, and they can take their family members and their children back when they're older and show them something that they built, so. Skills they'll use throughout their life as homeowners, so it's always good to see.
Okay, then we came back, unfortunately had to come back, and we did the second part of the meeting, and in our busy meeting for once, we have five consent agenda items. Was there any item that anybody wanted held up? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll jump in. The first item was BS one for food service equipment purchase. We had a. This is for a single dish machine kitchen at Think Academy, and there were bids out there for the equipment, and this is replacing twenty-six-year-old equipment, so we are getting our use out of this equipment. So there was a motion of the second, and I recommend the purchase of one-dish machine from CTL at a cost of thirteen thousand, two ninety, including installation with funding from Food Service Fund fifty.
Need a second? I'll second it.
And then the next item we had was a United States Department USDA equipment grant. So what had happened is Julie Marie, and this is actually had to do it a year ago, had put in a bid through the USDA, and it had to be used at Title I schools only, so that's why this one was used at, I believe, Grove. And we have a recommendation, the committee recommends that we approve the grant, USDA grant, for the purchase of a one-dish machine from CTL at a cost of ten thousand, one twenty-nine, including installation for the purchase of this one cavaction steamer from Strike Equipment at a cost of six thousand, five fifty-eight, including installation with one-third of the funding from the Food Service Fund fifty for approval.
Second.
Excuse me? I think you can just wait until the thirty.
Hold them all at the end.
Consent agenda. That way, there's one person making the motion and one person seconding.
Okay. Then the third is inter-district school agreement, sixty-six oh three with Nacusa School District, where we're looking to add two students in our virtual program from the Nacusa District, and Nacusa was acceptable in that agreement with the sixty-six point oh three. Our committee recommends, and I move to. I'm making up the words today. For the purchase of sixty-eight computers from Bytespeed Computer at a total cost of forty-eight thousand, two eighty to be funded from the district technology budget. This is a purchase that was due to part of the change of going to the trimester system where they needed more computer opportunities because of the possibility of larger classrooms. So we need to get more computers in at Lincoln. And then the final motion we have, and I approve, is for boilers at East Junior High. Ed had explained to us that the boilers are failing, and this is a repair of the boilers. There's pipes inside that are getting holes in them, so this is a repair of the two boilers for a total cost of forty-three thousand dollars to be funded from the building and grounds budget for approval.
Second of all.
Okay, we have a motion of the second to approve BS one through five. Need a roll call, Maureen? Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Rail?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
And with the balance of our millions, we had updates of purchases reviewed. There were a couple more purchases from CTL for food service equipment. The summer feeding program, Julie Marie gave us an update that two of our schools will be open for anybody that's in the school age, from anywhere from three K to eighteen years old. That would be the Mead School, and then Lincoln High School is actually open for breakfast and lunch during the whole time, and that's all free of charge to the students. I wonder how we get the word out on that.
There's a sign right in front of Lincoln High School I saw today.
And it's on the website?
Well, and we have students in both locations as well, and this has been aired on television.
Yeah, there's more and more people saying that a lot of people are hungry, and I'm sure they're here as well as other places. And they do not have to be members of our school district. It could be any child.
Eighteen years or younger.
Eighteen years or younger can walk into either of those schools and be fat, free of charge. So with that, I approve or make the motion to approve the balance of our meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to approve the Business Service Committee meeting minutes of June first, two thousand and fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, John. Next, we will move on to personnel. Sandy?
Personnel met last Monday, June first, and from that meeting, we have eight consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff further retirement requests. Second, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three professional staff resignation requests. Third, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff resignation requests. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff appointment requests. Fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff appointment request. Sixth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one summer school food service appointment. Seventh, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one summer technology support appointment. And eighth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three summer cleaner appointment requests.
Second.
Anything you want to hold up?
Okay, there's a motion of second to approve BS one through eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, John. Next, we will move on to personnel. Sandy?
Personnel met last Monday, June first, and from that meeting, we have eight consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff further retirement requests. Second, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three professional staff resignation requests. Third, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff resignation requests. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff appointment requests. Fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff appointment request. Sixth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one summer school food service appointment. Seventh, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one summer technology support appointment. And eighth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three summer cleaner appointment requests.
Second.
Anything you want to hold up?
Okay, there's a motion of second to approve BS one through eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, John. Next, we will move on to Ed Services. Anne?
Thanks, John. Ed Services also met last Monday and June first, and we had no public comment. We have five consent agenda items. Does anyone want any of those held up? Okay, our first three consent agenda item was Rule three forty, well, three forty-seven, Rule one, guidelines for control and maintenance of student records. Three forty-seven, Rule two, student records files. Three forty-seven, exhibit, request to disclose directory information, and four ninety-one, photographing of students. Kelly Dickman, who's our superintendent, reviewed proposed changes to the policies and exhibits. She explained the need for the changes, especially where directory data is concerned. Foremost is ensuring student privacy. John Crane expressed agreement that student date of birth and telephone listing should not be included. Administration will again be informing parents of their right to restrict the release of directory data. A guardian will be provided a paper notice to opt out at the beginning of their student's elementary, middle school, junior high, and senior high school years. At the high school level, there is an additional federal statutory provision contained in Policy nine, five, to eight of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act in which separate notice is required to opt out of releasing student information to military recruiters or secondary institutions. Special notice about this provision is included in the high school version of the paper form. Board Policy three forty-seven, Rule two, student records files was reviewed. The policy was last revised in April two thousand and one and needs updating to bring it in line with how physical pupil records and electronic records handling has evolved over the past fourteen years. And Board Policy four ninety-one, photographing of students, was also reviewed. Slight revisions are being suggested to align it with the changes being recommended in Policy three forty-seven, Rules one and two, and Exhibit and in light of Policy seven thirty-one point one, locker room privacy, which was developed in November two thousand and eight as a result of two thousand and seven Wisconsin Act one eighteen. Our second consent agenda item was about our secondary language arts acquisition. And Roxanne Filts, our English Language Arts Subcommittee co-chair and secondary literacy supervisor, along with members of the English Language Arts CII Subcommittee, presented an iMovie showing some of the reasons the committee has selected the Hope Mifflin Hard Court Collections series to support the updated curriculum. Ms. Filts explained that the series was piloted for a full semester in all three secondary buildings. It was the most comprehensive program they found. It was noted that this is a one-time purchase with consumables free every year after the initial purchase. Ms. Filts reviewed the cost for novels and how dollars were allocated between secondary buildings. Sandra Hatte questioned if the novels would be perma-bound or paperback, and Ms. Filts explained that they are still negotiating with companies and would like to get perma-bound, but dollars will dictate what is purchased. We then moved on to WRPS Co-Curricular Code of Conduct, and Ron Rasmussen, principal of Lincoln High School, explained the proposed updates to the WRPS Co-Curricular Code of Conduct. Then we moved on to Career and Technical Ed Update and Carl Perkins' approval. Eric Seiler, Career and Technical Education Coordinator, reviewed the Carl Perkins grant for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. Mr. Seiler shared that over three hundred students at Lincoln High School took transcribed credits with Midstate Technical College, and about eight hundred and sixty-eight credits were earned. This equated to an approximate savings of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. He further explained that the district received an additional twenty-six thousand dollars from the Department of Public Instruction for the apprenticeship program. Then we moved on to Response to Intervention Guide approval, and Kathy Stevens Hens explained changes to the RTI document that was initially approved in May of two thousand and thirteen. And that was not in April as was stated in the background. During the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year, over four hundred and ninety students were served in reading and two hundred and fifty-eight students were served in math through the RTI program. And with that, the committee recommends and I move to approve all five consent agenda items.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to approve ES one through five. We have a roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rail?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
And we'll go on to some updates. First update was on just, well, while the committee, Julie Marie was here and highlighted the wellness committee implementation monitoring plan and how the four required goals are being met. A gold star was received during the WRPS administrative review from DPI. And Kathy Stevens Hens shared that the PAWS bill passed, and the Department of Public Instruction will not produce school and district report cards for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. However, the results from testing in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen will be published in WisDASH and shared with the Educational Services Committee at a future meeting. And with that, the committee recommends and I move that the balance of the Educational Services Committee minutes be approved.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to approve the Educational Services Committee meeting minutes of June first, two thousand and fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Minutes are approved. Thanks, Anne. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Referrals and Information Requests. Anybody have anything to add? Okay, we can move on to Legislative Agenda. Mary, do you have anything for us tonight? Anything good?
Same old. Same old. I, you know, went down the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, our website, looked up the legislative update and read through it. You know, it's really kind of all the same. You know, we really need to find some kind of way to fund our public schools, and nobody's willing to take that up, and until they do, I think we're going to continue to have this. And then when you add the vouchers, I don't know, I think we're just headed down on, wow, we all know that. So I did go in to the Daily Caribbean, and their Sunday edition, they had, and maybe some of you saw it, but I'll just highlight some of the things that they said, how the budget plans would affect education. It was taken from the Wisconsin State Journal. The Republican-led State Budget Committee approved dramatic changes to the K-12 education landscape during a recent early morning vote. The new policies written into the two thousand and fifteen, seventeen budget include subjecting low-performing large school districts to a state-imposed reorganization, lifting the cap on school vouchers, and changes to how students with disabilities are educated. The Joint Finance Committee is finishing its work on the spending plan, then the full Assembly and Senate will take up before Governor Walker reviews a version to sign. Some of the concerns raised, and I'll just read a few, the first one had to do with vouchers. The budget would gradually lift the thousand-student cap on taxpayer-funded vouchers for private schools under the statewide program. How many students might take advantage of the statewide voucher system if there is no cap? There are currently about thirty-five hundred applications from students seeking vouchers in the statewide program. That includes about twenty-five hundred new students and also does not account for students who will be ineligible because of family income. Another one was how would a new voucher, well, why do some special education advocates oppose vouchers? Private schools are not required to follow federal disability laws, so there's no guarantee that students would receive adequate services, critics say. Advocates for the proposal, including GOP Senator Alberta Darling of River Hills, have said not providing students with disabilities the same opportunity to receive school vouchers as others' students is unfair. Under the Common Core, the Common Core Align Badger Exam was used for one school year and was eliminated in Walker's proposed budget. What happens next year? The bill Republicans approved requires the state superintendent to find a new state test that could assess students in English, reading, writing, science, and math. A request for proposal has been released by DPI for a new test, and not many test vendors have an available exam that tests students in all five subject areas. DPI also is required to ask the U.S. Department of Education for a waiver from federal requirements that mandate one test be given to all students in order to provide schools with options of tests. The bill also calls on high school students to pass a separate civics test to graduate starting in the two thousand and sixteen school year. Then they ask how other states have obtained federal waivers for the requirements that students take just one test. According to Brad Carl, an associate director of the Value Added Research Center at UW Madison, Utah and New Hampshire in recent years were allowed to provide multiple tests on a trial basis for a small number of schools. On the idea of athletics, public school districts would be required to allow students who are homeschooled, attend an independent or virtual charter school, or attend private schools to participate in sports or extracurricular activities. A fee may be charged to those students. What's the reasoning for this proposal? Representative Bob Coe, Republican from Stratford, says he proposed the bill because
Directory data is concerned. Foremost is ensuring student privacy. John Crean expressed agreement that student date of birth and telephone listing should not be included. Administration will again be informing parents of their right to restrict the release of directory data. A guardian will be provided a paper notice to opt out at the beginning of their students' elementary, middle school, junior high, and senior high school years. At the high school level, there is an additional federal statutory provision contained in Policy 9528 of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, in which separate notice is required to opt out of releasing student information to military recruiters or secondary institutions. Special notice about this provision is included in the high school version of the paper form. Board Policy 347 Rule 2, Student Records Files, was reviewed. The policy was last revised in April 2001 and needs updating to bring it in line with how physical pupil records and electronic records handling has evolved over the past 14 years. And Board Policy 491, Photographing of Students, was also reviewed. Slight revisions are being suggested to align it with the changes being recommended in Policy 347 Rules 1 and 2, and exhibit and enlighten Policy 731.1 Locker Room Privacy, which was developed in November 2008 as a result of 2007 Wisconsin Act 118. Our second consent agenda item was about our secondary language arts acquisition. Anne Roxanne Filts, our English Language Arts Subcommittee Co-Chair and Secondary Literacy Supervisor, along with members of the English Language Arts CII Subcommittee, presented an iMovie showing some of the reasons the committee has selected the Hope Mifflin Hard Court Collections Series to support the updated curriculum. Ms. Filts explained that the series was piloted for a full semester in all three secondary buildings. It was the most comprehensive program they found. It was noted that this is a one-time purchase with consumables free every year after the initial purchase. Ms. Filts reviewed the cost for novels and how dollars were allocated between secondary buildings. Sandra Hatte questioned if the novels would be perma-bound or paperback, and Ms. Filts explained that they are still negotiating with companies and would like to get perma-bound, but dollars will dictate what is purchased. We then moved on to WRPS Co-Curricular Code of Conduct. Anne Ron Rasmussen, Principal of Lincoln High School, explained the proposed updates to the WRPS Co-Curricular Code of Conduct. Then we moved on to Career and Technical Ed Update and Carl Perkins' approval. Eric Seiler, Career and Technical Education Coordinator, reviewed the Carl Perkins Grant for the 2015-16 school year. Mr. Seiler shared that over 300 students at Lincoln High School took transcribed credits with Midstate Technical College, and about 868 credits were earned. This equated to an approximate savings of $118,000. He further explained that the district received an additional $26,000 from the Department of Public Instruction for the apprenticeship program. Then we moved on to Response to Intervention Guide approval, and Kathy Stevins Hints explained changes to the RTI document that was initially approved in May of 2013. That was not in April, as was stated in the background. During the 2014-15 school year, over 490 students were served in reading and 258 students were served in math through the RTI program. And with that, the committee recommends an iMovie to approve all five consent agenda items.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve ES 1 through 5. We have roll call, please, Marine.
Mr. Bembow?
Yes.
Mr. Crean?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine.
Then we'll go on to some updates. First update was on just while the committee, Julie Marie was here and highlighted the Wellness Committee Implementation Monitor Turning Plan and how the four required goals are being met. A gold star was received during the WRPS Administrative Review from DPI. Kathy Stevins Hints shared that the PAWS Bill passed, and the Department of Public Instruction will not produce school and district report cards for 2014-15. However, the results from testing in 2014-15 will be published in WisDASH and shared with the Educational Services Committee at a future meeting. And with that, the committee recommends, and iMovie said, the balance of the Education Services Committee Minutes be approved.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve the Educational Services Committee Meeting Minutes of June 1, 2015. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thanks, Anne. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Referrals and Information Requests. Anybody have anything to add? Okay, we can move on to Legislative Agenda. Mary, do you have anything for us tonight? Anything good?
Same old. I went on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, our website, looked up the legislative update and read through it. You know, it's really kind of all the same. You know, we really need to find some kind of way to fund our public schools. And nobody's willing to take that up, and until they do, I think we're going to continue to have this. And then when you add the vouchers, I don't know, I think we're just headed down on, well, we all know that. So I did go into the Daily Caribbean, in their Sunday edition, they had, and maybe some of you saw it, but I'll just highlight some of the things that they said, how the budget plans would affect education. It was taken from the Wisconsin State Journal. The Republican-led State Budget Committee approved dramatic changes to the K-12 education landscape during a recent early morning vote. The new policies written into the 2015-17 budget include subjecting low-performing large school districts to a state-imposed reorganization, lifting the cap on school vouchers, and changes to how students with disabilities are educated. The Joint Finance Committee is finishing its work on the spending plan, then the full Assembly and Senate will take up before Governor Walker reviews a version to sign. Some of the concerns raised, and I'll just read a few. The first one had to do with vouchers. The budget would gradually lift the 1,000-student cap on taxpayer-funded vouchers for private schools under the statewide program. How many students might take advantage of the statewide voucher system if there is no cap? There are currently about 3,500 applications from students seeking vouchers in the statewide program. That includes about 2,500 new students and also does not account for students who will be ineligible because of family income. Another one was how would a new voucher, well, why do some special education advocates oppose vouchers? Private schools are not required to follow federal disability laws, so there's no guarantee that students would receive adequate services, critics say. Advocates for the proposal, including GOP Senator Alberta Darling of River Hills, have said not providing students with disabilities the same opportunity to receive school vouchers as other students is unfair. Under the Common Core, the Common Core Align Badger Exam was used for one school year and was eliminated in Walker's proposed budget. What happens next year? The bill Republicans approved requires the state superintendent to find a new state test that could assess students in English, reading, writing, science, and math. A request for proposal has been released by DPI for a new test, and not many test vendors have an available exam that tests students in all five subject areas. DPI also is required to ask the U.S. Department of Education for a waiver from federal requirements that mandate one test be given to all students in order to provide schools with options of tests. The bill also calls on high school students to pass a separate civics test to graduate starting in the 2016 school year. Then they ask how other states have obtained federal waivers for the requirements that students take just one test. According to Brad Carle, Associate Director of the Value Added Research Center at UW-Madison, Utah and New Hampshire in recent years were allowed to provide multiple tests on a trial basis for a small number of schools. On the idea of athletics, public school districts would be required to allow students who are homeschooled, attend an independent or virtual charter school, or attend private schools to participate in sports or extracurricular activities. A fee may be charged to those students. What's the reasoning for this proposal? Representative Bob Coe, Republican from Stratford, says he proposed the bill because students living in the school district who have parents who pay property taxes should be able to take advantage of such activities. Critics say allowing non-district students to participate could bump district students off teams. So there's a lot of, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see what happens finally, when it is voted on.
I just think we're spinning our wheels when they ask Tony Evers to find a test. I think the legislature, with their wisdom, could make up the test, because they know what they want.
Well, the frustrating part and the sad part is that we had listening sessions with multiple legislators, and they said, well, this stuff is off the table, and this isn't even being considered, and our leadership says this is going to disappear. And then all of a sudden, this omnibus bill comes out, and it was as thick as this, about as thick as that, coming out with everything that they were throwing in on it, and none of it. You know, when I looked up the statute to how a bill was supposed to be passed in the state of Wisconsin, this does, that omnibus document doesn't follow any of it. Most of it isn't authored.
That'll be a question on the civics test.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. That guy brought up the civics test. They don't, first of all, they're not following state law with providing public education funding, because that's, state statute is that the only funded education system in the state of Wisconsin is public education. They're breaking that one, so that guy failed on that one. They keep telling us about how the law is supposed to be made, but yet there's still laws from, including, what is my, our favorite one, Sandy? The...
Course Options.
Course Options, that they still don't know who authored that, but yet it got passed through. There was no author, there was no second, there was no public hearing. So this whole omnibus, then there's no public hearing. I mean, the stuff that's coming out of Madison, it's completely disheartening to anybody in public education, and then you have people sitting there bashing teachers, bashing schools, you know, bashing this. And it's frustrating, because our schools do good things. I mean, there is nobody else to teach most of the disabled, most of the learning disability kids, most of the free and reduced kids. They aren't going to voucher schools, because most of them can't afford and can't get to the public schools a lot of times without our transportation. So to have this, this stuff that's going on in Madison, I agree with Mary, it's just completely disheartening, the way these people are selling, they're literally selling the state out for dollars, political action dollars. And it's sad, because they don't care about the kids in the state, they don't care about the constituents, all they want to do is get the dollar to get re-elected.
Well, with this budget, for the first time, our state will be spending below the national average on educating our kids. So that's never done.
It's the 12th, and now it's, what, 24th or so? And it's a waste of money to take a test one year and not the next, to get the continuity. So the stuff that they're doing is wasteful. Oh, yeah, I have to mention, they probably wasted almost $10 million on developing that test, and now after one year, we're throwing it out. So they just tossed $10 million out to them. Legislature, administration of schools is wasteful.
Well, if we're not at the tipping point now with public education, I'm not sure what it's going to take. With the teacher licensure discussions that they're having, I mean, it's really raced to the bottom, and you wonder if there is a value for public education coming from some of those people. I guess all we can do is voice our opinions and go to the polls on Election Day, so encourage anyone that's watching this to do the same.
And also to thank our staff, because we do, we do what we shouldn't even be able to do with the money we're getting. And we do it, we continue to do it, and we appreciate that.
Very much.
Well, one other point along that is that our teachers and our administration, our building-in grounds people, our computer people, every one of them goes out, even Julie Marie said, everything that they buy now is Energy Star, so we're getting rebates back. We probably, I mean, we had $42,000 approved in grants for Carl Perkins that Eric Seiler's been going out for years to go get. I mean, we have a Japanese teacher that went out and basically got a grant so that she could teach Japanese in the school district. So, I mean, the fact that our teachers, our staff, our administration goes out and gets money, probably the tune of almost a half a million dollars a year, I'd say, I didn't add anything out, but, you know, we have a lot of money that comes in that we aren't, our taxpayers aren't paying for it.
We run over a million.
Okay. Well, I knew it was a good number, but to have that kind of money come in, I can't even imagine, because, I mean, we have not had a budget increase in 22 and a half years or 23 years.
They don't give that money to just anybody either.
No, you have to, it's all competitive.
Places will use it well.
The fact that our people go out and do that, I mean, I applaud every one of our people in our district, because they work hard to work for our kids, and it's very refreshing, to be honest, as a school board member, to see people go out and do that and take pride in their job, even though it's probably the lowest position, or lowest their, their profession has been treated ever. So, I mean, I applaud everybody that's teaching our kids today in our school district.
Don't forget all these cuts and things that are happening to us. We're also going to be getting a fantastic $5 reduction in our property taxes, so that makes it all worthwhile.
All right.
Thanks, Mary.
Always bring the good news, don't you? Okay, we'll move on to bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second. Motion, a second, that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. Marine, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Crean?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bembow?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. We'll move into new business. The first item is discussion and possible action to approve raising admission fees at Lincoln Co-Curricular Events.
Currently, we charge $3 for our Wisconsin Valley Conference admissions to our events at Lincoln High School. A motion was made, a second, at our last principal's meeting, to look at increasing that fee to $4 for admission to Wisconsin Valley Conference, Wisconsin Valley Conference events. The Great Northern Conference next to us is at $4. In addition, due to the lack of officials within our area, we've had to increase officials' pay each of the last two years. For the upcoming year, it'll be approximately $2,000 to $3,000, just to hope to have quality officials. The reason for the $4 increase, or $4 total cost of admission, was that's what the WA charges also for entrance at events. So really, to look at a consistent dollar figure to our neighboring conferences as well, that's what the WA charges for initial regional events. All of us as administration of the WBC schools were asked to talk to our Boards of Education about that, hopefully have an approved motion from you, and then we would go back and we will go as principals and determine what that, in effect, what the final cost will be.
I know the Fox Valley, we've been going over there when Joe was there, and they were charging $4 three years ago.
Yeah, there are a lot of their conferences that have gone to $5 already in the state, and we've been at three of the WBC.
McCross, we paid $5, don't we?
So we're looking at $4 for a good night of entertainment.
Still cheap.
I'd make a motion to approve raising admission fees to Lincoln Co-Curricular Events from $3 to $4.
Second.
Specifically, admission to events such as all, is there a specific event that you wanted to?
Well, Wisconsin Valley Conference events that have current admission for.
So it's just sporting events? It isn't concerts?
Specific admission to, to events, W, Wisconsin Valley Conference events.
Have you projected what the increase in revenue would be?
No, we think it will cover the cost of the officials for the two raises for the last two years.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve raising admission fees to Lincoln Co-Curricular Events from $3 to $4, specifically admission to events such as Wisconsin Valley Conference events charging admission fees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you want to go again to get them?
Yes, I do.
Again?
Have fun, stay dry. Okay, Item B, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of Approximately $4,755,000 General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2015. I'm guessing, Dan, that's going to be you?
Tonight, we have Michelle Leibert, my consultant, and she's been taking me through this. I also have to hand out some, you can hand out.
All right. Good evening. Maybe some good news after that last conversation, well, not, not the athletic one, but the one before that. Before I talk about the results of the refinancing itself, which is the resolution before you for approval, I wanted to talk briefly about your Moody's report. So that's the first handout that you received. You're also receiving the resolution for approval, but the Moody's report is this document right here. Moody's Investor Service rates the district and the credit rating that you receive directly relates to the interest rates that you receive on your borrowing. So your rating has been affirmed as an A1. Dan and I sat on a call with Moody's for about an hour, two or three weeks ago. I think Dan said it was one of the easier policies he's had lately, and I think the reason for that is, is really the theme of this whole report, I think, is stability. Wisconsin Rapids School District is kind of hitting a phase of stability, not only in your tax base, your equalized values is finally turned the corner, and you had positive growth last year. Employment is looking more positive in the metropolitan Wisconsin Rapids area. We see some stabilization of enrollment, which is great, and we see some stabilization of your finances and improving the fiscal position of the district, despite all of what you just talked about, all the challenges that you have from the state. The decisions you make in this room are really important, and they're reflected in the bottom line of the district, which is improving, which is great news. All of that is recognized by Moody's and relates to that A1 rating that you received. So this two, three, two to three-page report is just some nightstand reading for you. I think as board members, it might be good information, and it kind of has everything and anything in there that would be important from a financial perspective of how the district's doing. So I wanted to start with that before I go into the refinancing results, which is this handout here. Again, this is the resolution before you for approval this evening, the first of two resolutions that you will, that you have on your agenda related to financial matters. What we're looking at is refinancing the 2007 bonds. So this analysis that we have in front of you, we have the 2007 bonds on the left-hand side of the page. We have what those look like before the refinancing. So those maturities that are highlighted in green are the maturities that are prepayable, are eligible for prepayment. You can see the interest rates associated with those maturities highlighted in green, ranging from a 4% to a 4 and 1/8. You are able to replace those maturities with new debt, which is on the right-hand side of the page, with a true interest cost of a 2.33%. So by replacing those four-plus percents with 2.3%, your total savings are nearly $240,000 over the life of, the remaining life of the issue. Average annual savings are about $20,000 a year, and this issue itself, for your approval tonight, is also prepayable in 2023. So you'll have another opportunity down the road if you find yourself in either a great interest rate environment, as we are in today, or in a position that you can prepay debt. So that option and flexibility is still out there. On a present value basis, your savings are 4.5%. Present value is just a measure of if I could bring you all the savings today in the trunk of my car, that's how much it would be. I did not do that, so everybody follow me outside, please. And present value as a percentage of what you're refunding, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, their benchmark says you should save at least 3% if you're contemplating a refinancing. So we're above that benchmark, looking at 4.5% savings.
Well, interest rates are going up, so the sooner we act.
They certainly only seem to be heading in that direction, as some buyers and traders said to me over the past week. The market seems to interpret all news as, as news for rates to go up, because that's just the general momentum that we seem to be heading in. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I would move that we approve a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $4,755,000 General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2015. And I'd like to comment that I think this is a good reflection on Dan and Colleen and the other administrative people, that we have this solidity, and I believe it's good stuff.
I'll second that. Four parts.
Okay, motion, a second, to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $4,755,000 General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2015. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Crean?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembow?
Yes.
Marine, motion approved. Okay, and next, consideration and possible action to approve resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated August 27, 2012.
So, that's the next handout. You can see that I don't do anything that's not a complete mouthful, so I apologize for that, but the defeasance analysis is the last part of the documents that I handed out, and this is really just echoing, again, that work that you've been doing, the idea of being able to create a more sound fiscal position for the district by adding to reserves on an annual basis, but also looking at prepaying debt on an annual basis. And that's what you're doing here, and you've done it for the past few years, so this is just a next step in that process. And you continue to chip away at the same issue, the 2012 bonds. Now, the refinancing that you just approved is outside of revenue limits, is refinancing debt approved at referendum, so the savings we talked about there are going to reduce taxes to the taxpayers. The defeasance, on the other hand, is under revenue limits, so what you're accomplishing here by prepaying this debt is really setting yourself up for future opportunity to have more space under the revenue limits for that important money that you need to operate the school district. So again, that's the process that you've been doing for, I think, two to three years now, and this would be the next step in that process. You've earmarked about 900,000 to $1 million for this, and you will spend 989,000 to defees a portion, again, of the 2012 bonds. That will close on June 24, so those funds will leave your account, go to this escrow account on June 24. That's great, because it'll get captured for state aid purposes, so you'll get aid in on that expenditure. And overall, you're reducing debt service by about $1 million. You're spending $989,000 to do it, a total reduction in your Fund 38 levy of $24,000 on a net basis. So again, creating some flexibility for you in the future is what you're accomplishing here with the defeasance.
Are there any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the transferance of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to the defeasance of certain of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated August 27, 2012.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second, to approve resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated August 27, 2012. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bembow?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Crean?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Good evening. Next, we'll move into discussion and possible action to approve proposed modifications to the SWC 2000 Inc. lease.
Okay. I, we've talked to you a couple, on a couple of occasions about the coffee facility and the need to support the ice. And we were approached and asked to consider modifying the lease, which we did, we could look at putting some language together, which would allow Southwood County then to sell beer and wine, but only under certain instances. It would be permitted in connection with Junior Hockey League games, which we talked about earlier, any other events not affiliated with school-age activities, and those would be things like WIAA events, youth hockey and figure skating, and so on. We also reserve the right to revoke that permission upon three days prior notice, if there would be some reason to do so. I guess I'm curious as to whether or not we are including language that's sufficient, defining it sufficiently, so that we're with the same understanding that anything that would do with our kids or youth would not, they would not be in a situation to sell. But they do rent the facility out for other events, and that's where they would like to be able to sell.
Would the, I guess, one question I thought of, would there be alcohol stored on-site? I mean, in between events, is it in a locked? I mean, in between events, is it in a locked area? Is it brought in the day of the event? That would be one question I...
And Mr. Jim Schuchik is here, and perhaps you can respond to that.
Yes, if there was anything between times, it would be locked up, you know, not accessible to the general...
Because I'm guessing if you had a River Kings game, and then there might be a Lincoln High School game, and then another River Kings game, so you would have a different mixture of people, you know, just so that... My only concern was that there's a specified area that's under lock and key that nobody could get into.
No question. The River Kings will be playing on Friday and Saturday nights, seven times during the season. And there's also other events who have, like recently, they had the Fly Ball, the dog thing, and part of it. And in July, we got the figure skating coming for a weekend, and we're going to have three sheets of ice for, I said, figure skating.
Curling.
Curling. And next year, they're going to have two weekends, and we're going to have five sheets or something. So the curling is getting to be a big thing, too, so...
Do you like that?
Those are the kind of events that we... And any income that we get from the beer sales goes to support the rink, which is for the kids.
Yeah. And I'm guessing that our attorney crafted this language?
It's not anything different than Legion Baseball. For years, had alcohol in that concession stand, but it was locked in a, their coolers were locked, and then we had Lincoln games there, Assumption had games there, and we had, and then what, then the Rangers, Rangers Ramblers, American Legion would sell it on their, their terms. You know, it's the same thing. We had, we had use of that concession stand while there was alcohol in there, but it was under lock.
Well, I think clarification is that the building itself is on a footprint of school property, but the building itself is not owned by the district. But because it's on school property, the land underneath it, that's why we're having this discussion. Well, and there is statute that our attorney pointed out with civil liability, there's an exemption for municipalities, and in that particular statute, school districts are considered municipality under that definition. And so there is, there is a...
We're liable for it. Wait for approval.
Do you have the language, or will you come back with that?
For the lease?
We have it tonight.
We have it.
The amendment for the lease, you mean?
Yes.
I do have that.
That's okay, as long as you have it and it's what you want.
It was in the pack.
Take a look at that. But the statute basically says that no municipality is civilly liable for damage to any person or property caused by the consumption of alcohol beverages by that person or any other person by reason of any of the following. And then it goes through the various reasons. So our attorney felt comfortable with the fact that we wouldn't be held liable. Doesn't mean somebody wouldn't try, but that we have the leg to stand on.
They can always try.
Absolutely.
Plus, we need to support the facility.
You bet.
Without that type of sale, we're not going to be able to support the facility, because...
I move to approve the proposed modifications to the SWC 2000 Incorporated lease.
I just wanted to briefly say, we will also be bringing another policy forward, PAC use. We don't want, this is very specific to this facility only, and we'll clarify in some of our other policy that it's understood that's not abroad.
Can I add the rest of your motion there? To permit beer and wine sales during events as described in the amendment presented? I'll second that with that added.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve an amendment to the lease held with Southwood County 2000 Incorporated to permit beer and wine sales during events as described in the amendment presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll get a clean copy. Jim and I are on the parking rec together, so I'll bring it to you for signature when we get a clean copy.
All right. You're welcome. We can move on to item B, possible action on employee appointments, resignations, and retirement requests. Looks like we have a couple.
Yes, just prior to the meeting, I handed a sheet around board members that lists one resignation and two appointments that the administration would like to recommend that the board approve.
I'd make a motion to approve the one resignation request and the two appointment requests as printed.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve the one resignation request and two appointment requests as printed for us tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can move on to F, consideration and possible action to approve 2014-15 wage increase settlement for the WRDA employee group.
We met several times, it's our teacher group, we met several times with them, and came to an agreement of 1.46, which is the CPI settlement with that group. And we would recommend that along with the manner in which we'll be dispersing that, will be an inverse dispersment. They will get retro, you know, they're under a contract year, so it will be retro, it'll be for this last full year of employment with us. So we would be recommending the 1.46.
Okay, and I'd just add, I mean, we met with them and we understand their frustrations, what Act 10 has done to bargaining. We feel frustrations with it as well, but it is rules in place, so it's the rules of the game we have to follow. I think that it was constructive, we had good discussions, and I think in the end everybody walked away feeling like their voice was heard, so that was good to see.
Knowing that they deserve more, I would have to still move that we approve the 14-15 wage increase settlement for the WRDA employee group at 1.46.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to read off my sheet.
Okay.
Did I think I heard you say, Larry? A motion to approve a 2014-15 contract year salary increase of 1.46 percent with an inverse proportional distribution for professional staff employees represented by WRDA per the conditions and details outlined in the agreement negotiated with WRDA. You've got one.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, motion carries. Okay, move on to item G, discussion and possible action to approve an increase to entry-level base pay for professional staff.
Currently, our base wage is 36.5, and we'd like to propose to the board that we move that to 37.5. The rationale behind that is to remain competitive and give a living wage to an entry-level staff member. Several districts in the area are at or above that, and we'd like to stay competitive. Ryan, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
No, that would be helpful. It's becoming increasingly challenging to attract and retain new hires, and to have that little bit extra as a negotiating chip, if you will, in trying to hire new employees makes a big difference.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve setting the entry-level base wage at 37.5 for professional staff, beginning with the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve setting the entry-level base wage at $37,500 for professional staff, beginning with the 2015-16 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We can move on to item H, discussion and possible action to approve moving current first-year teaching staff members to a newly established base pay rate.
This refers to the teachers we hired last year. They are in their, they have just completed their first year with the district. They were hired at 36.5, as I mentioned previously. In order to keep them ahead of the teachers we will hire this coming year at 37.5, we would ask that you increase those first-year teachers hired at that 36.5 base to an amount of 37.5. They would then, next year, be subject to any increase in wage, which would then bump them beyond. In addition to that, they can take credits, which also helps increase their salary. So we would ask that we move all first-year teachers hired at a base of 36.5 to 37.5.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve moving all 2014-15 first-year teachers hired at a base wage of 36.5 to an amount of 37.5 for the start of the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve moving all 2014-15 first-year teachers hired at a base wage of $36,500 to an amount of $37,500 for the start of the 2015-16 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, consideration and possible action to approve 14-15 recommended wage increase for nonrepresented employees.
We have a number of groups of employees that are not represented by a union. We have physical therapists, for example, school psychologists, and so on. We've worked our way through many of those groups already, bringing them forward to you for an increase. And this evening, we would ask for 1.46 wage increase for the nonrepresented employees, including physical therapists, nurses, school psychologists, our network support specialists, our network manager, and our instructional software support specialist. I think we're pretty close to through the groups then. That would also be retroactive to this recent, you know, 2014-15, I'm sorry, school year.
I move to approve the 1.46 wage increase for nonrepresented employees, including therapists, nurses, school psychologists, network support specialists, network manager, and instructional software support specialist. And what does inverse proportional distribution mean? Just kidding, later.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve a 1.46 percent wage increase for nonrepresented employees, including the physical therapists, nurses, school psychologists, network support specialists, network manager, and instructional software support specialist for the 2014-15 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
John, if I could just add, I think it should be noted that, you know, that to the public that we're not just giving money out to give out money, it's to keep people. I mean, if we, we lose people in these support areas, you know, it's kind of like it's really becoming more competitive in trying to retain your people. So if we don't have an attractive base even to the public sector jobs, you know, it's going to get tougher and tougher, because teachers are becoming fewer and fewer, and we aren't getting as many teachers coming in and as many teachers applying for jobs. So the whole profession is looking at, is becoming tighter, and the job market is becoming a lot more competitive. So we have to remain competitive to keep our good teachers. As we saw tonight, we lost 132 years of experience in six people. You can't replace that. I mean, it's very hard to replace that experience overnight with new people. So we do have to keep, be competitive in the market, and you do hear a lot of the horror stories where people are leaving the profession just to go to the public market because, public sector, because the pay isn't there anymore.
Network manager, big bucks.
Well, I don't think a 1.46 percent increase is astronomical in any...
No, it isn't, but you still have to remain competitive, and you still have to run the school district, even, we have to have people to run the school district.
Well, we did budget for the 1.46, so we have that available.
Okay, we can move on to item G, discussion and possible action to amend the 2014-15 district budget.
Dan?
Yes. Sorry. I was focusing on the back of this sheet. Where is that one?
The back of that sheet.
I can just...
We are looking at, it's a green sheet, which I think was put on your table. Right. The, these are the proposed, I went through the budget this last week now, and I tried to project what we're going to spend now in junior. And these adjustments will bring our budget in online with that $2 million. When we did the defeasance a few years ago, we wanted to have $2 million in our budget, put into fund balance, because we spent our fund balance to defees debt. So this, amending this budget will do that, will provide that $2 million for the fund balance. And it looks like we will come in at those amounts that are...
So it's the third column?
Yeah, it's the center column there is the amended budget. The general fund is on the front side, the revenues on top, and the expenditures on the bottom. On the backside, there's the special projects funds, which are the special education, and the Fund 29, which is the Native American Fund, Federal Fund. The next one down is Fund 46, which we just established this year. So, and we approved the $25,000 deposit into that fund. The next one is the referendum, it's a debt service fund, there's a nonreferendum, and there's also the referendum debt service fund combined. The two items you approved tonight are in that budget amendment. One is the refinancing, and one is the debt defeasance. And then the next one is the food service fund. And then finally, the community, the final one is the Fund 80 Community Service Fund.
So basically, you're going through, and we make projections now when we put a budget together, and then as we come close to the end of the year, we can do kind of an actual? I mean, would that be a way of...
When they do the audit, they look at what you've budgeted, and then you get a little black mark if you exceed the budget amount. So the initial budget I put forward...
Budget high.
Was budget high, to begin with. Now, I looked at the budget for the full year, and I'm able to project what we're going to end up with.
If this budget were approved, what would be the effect on taxpayers?
This has no impact on the tax. This money goes right into fund, goes into fund balance at the end of the year.
It doesn't change the tax levy from...
Tax levy's already been set. Yeah. This includes the levy that was set last October.
These are simply amendments. We'll bring in a budget, too, in the fall again to set the levy.
Then I'll ask that same question.
Yes.
That's a good time to ask it.
That levy is controlled anyway by the revenue limit. It really doesn't matter what your budget, you can't spend any more than what is allowed by the revenue limit.
That sounds familiar.
I have one at home.
You can, you can spend, you can spend, you can exceed your expenses by using fund balance, but you cannot increase your tax levy by what you spend. Other than by the defeasance, we did that one year.
We could have a referendum.
That's right, if you have a referendum. Yes, you can do that through a referendum.
Okay, screw it.
Any other questions on this?
Then I would make a motion to accept and approve the recommended amendments to the 2014-15 district budget.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept and approve the recommended amendments to the 2014-15 district budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last on our agenda is update and approval of the 15-16 district budget to be published.
And I want to go first.
Okay.
Because he's going to wrap it up then. I did, I did provide you a sheet, it looks like that. I'm struggling to make it. I think it's like one big...
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to walk you through, so you know what kind of process we went through to work through our budget, our budget. The shortfall, we have a declining enrollment, less revenue limit exemption. In other words, the actual change in the revenue limit is $984,000, but because we're, which we were short. So the reason it only says 62,000 is due to the fact that we have a declining enrollment, and so we get that exemption, we also get the hold car minus exemption. And so that sort of mitigates that 984,000 all in one year. So it kind of pushes it off.
It spreads it out?
It spreads it out, good way to put it. So in other words, eventually, we're going to have to cut those dollars. Now, next year, if we have some decline in enrollment again this year, we may get those exemptions again. But the year we don't have those exemptions is the year that we would be cutting those dollars in.
What percent was our decline in enrollment? Do you have that, or do you...
Percent of our population?
Or yeah? That's okay.
I don't know. I don't know.
Actually, it was in that, that report that Michelle handed out, if you read through there.
But the percentage of our...
Deficit, our enrollment decline.
Do you know what it was? The percentage of our enrollment? I mean, it was fifty-some students out of 5,200, so...
One percent.
One point something percent. But that was the average over ten, five, 10 years.
Thank you.
So anyway, we start out with that as, as part of our deficit, then we look at our health insurance premium increase. We anticipated 1.5 million approximately, we thought we'd have about a 15 percent renewal, and we ended up with a five point something. You voted to approve that, but that added to our shortfall about 560, 68, 570,000. We also pay supplemental credits to the teachers, so we account and budget for that. They are each allowed to take up to six credits, and we reimburse them a small portion of that credit cost. We had a transportation increase, that was something that we negotiated. And then the per pupil categorical aid, which is the $771,000, it's sitting on the table, we don't know which way that's going to go, but we have to account for that. So our total shortfall was $1,781,697. And then we had some things that we did to reduce. Now, remember that, that $1,007,000 could have been much larger if our health insurance had not been the increase that it sat at, so we were feeling pretty good about that. And we also know that that shortfall will decrease if that $771,000 is restored.
How do we negotiate that health increase at 5 percent when you thought 15 percent?
Well, some of us drove down to Madison and paid a visit to WEA directly, and then we also had some onsite visits here.
Okay.
And then we made a, a small change in the, in the health insurance, where we put caps on the office visits, the prescription medication, and their co-pays.
Okay. So employees who are paying, will be paying more from out of pocket for those things?
Potent, they could be.
Yeah.
They could be. Depends on, on how high their utilization is, so... So some of the reductions that we went through, I want to, we, we are planning to move the special education program out of building blocks, and that will be a cost savings of $12,000. But we are making some programmatic changes, because lots of TOTS is moving, is closing, and, and out of pitch, so Building Blocks will be working there, carrying on that fourth, that four-year-old kindergarten and preschool program. And so while she'll be losing that income from us, she won't be losing it in general, because she'll have some programs to continue. Snow day transportation, that just happens. If we don't have school one day, we save about $17,000 in transportation. So we did have a snow day, and we counted that. I, Dan kind of chuckles, but I insist, $17,000.
We'll take it.
Yep. Retirements and resignations, we're sitting at about $676,000 in savings.
How's that compared to other years?
That dollar amount?
Yeah.
It's hard to say. It really depends on who's retiring, who's resigning, and what, what, we could, I mean, we can find that number for you.
Yeah, go on. Just curious.
We have some reduced cost in our OPEB. When we made that change to pay just that 85 percent, freeze it, we have people dropping off that, that that didn't happen to, and so as they go off the plan, they go off the plan. So it was about a $438,000 savings, and then our HRA savings as well. So that brought our, our total reductions to about $1,744,000, and that leaves us $37,000 to cut, and we're still working on that. There are no staff raises accounted for in this, in this shortfall. Should that $771,000 be restored, then we would not have the $37,000 deficit, and we would be able to consider some possible wage increases. If that doesn't happen, that $37,000 will certainly be found, I don't imagine that we'll pay the full $350,000 out in credits, and I have no doubt that that would be covered there. Should that $771,000 be restored, we would not only be able to cover the $37,000 and do some wage increases, it will also, that would also potentially cover some other, you know, when we hire people, if we have to hire them at a little bit higher rate, those, those incidental costs that occur. So that's, that's part one, and then Dan also has a budget for publication.
This, taking those, these, I went one step further. I, I included the $71,000 in the revenue on this, on this budget proposal.
Well, we think, we think it's, I mean...
It seems to be leaning that way, you know, if they took a vote on it today, I might pass, who knows what it will, if, when it will. But this proposal does include the $71,000 in it.
Seven hundred and seventy.
Seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. And this will be the, what we're going to be developing our budget booklet on, but we need to publish this before our meeting in June, last, last Monday in June. So that's what this is. This is the notice for publication of our annual, our budget hearing.
And this is our, our best estimate at this time.
At this time.
And so we, we would...
This does, this hasn't incorporated the, the adjustments you just made on this one, because at the time, I didn't... Right. This, this is based on what we were going to discuss. Let's see, let's make a difference there. But anyway, this is what we wanted to hear paper this week, and then we'll be working on these numbers for a budget meeting, a budget hearing at the end of June.
Hearing no further questions, I will make a motion to approve the proposed 2015-16 budget reductions to make up for the projected deficit and to publish the 2015-16 district budget as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the proposed 2015-16 budget reductions to make up for the projected deficit and to publish the 2015-16 district budget as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I noticed it's very simplistic on paper, but there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears across it.
It doesn't really look that simplistic.
No.
Keep saying every year, what year, I'm not going to have to keep...
It's going to be a while.
All right. While looking at the calendar, there doesn't appear to be anything else scheduled for the month of June, I believe we should have a budget hearing at the end of the month. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.